We call the meeting to order for Wycomico County Council Friday, May 12th, 2023. Open work session in reference to Wycomico County budget. Good afternoon. How's everybody?
Good.
We'll go sideways so the public knows who you are.
Very good.
Steve Miller, I'm the Director of Recreation, Parks and Tourism.
Katie Rouse, I'm the Deputy Director of Recreation, Parks and Tourism.
Pam Ollyn, Finance Director.
Chuck Russo, Deputy Director, Recreation, Parks and Tourism.
Great, thank you. Appreciate you being here. Whoever would like to start will give you the floor, right?
Just one thing, and then I'm gonna let Katie and Steve and them talk, is that as with years past, this budget is predicated on some fee increases for Wreckin' Parks. As we have done in the past, we give you guys a list of fee increases. Those fee increases primarily support the programs that are there with the cost of labor. We need the fees to increase to be able to support those programs. And so the participants of the program are supporting the program versus the taxpayers. So that is primarily the increases that we will be requesting. If those increases are not approved, then the budget isn't balanced. We would need to adjust the appropriation.
Okay, thank you.
And that's normally approved separately from the budget.
Yes.
We do it by resolution, and that's normally approved before you adopt the budget.
And we'll get you a copy of that list. We'll get them to Laura so that they can pass out to everybody. Yes. Yep.
Maybe Steve or someone. For some of these programs where people can't afford it, is there private individuals that still step up and pay? You have, I know one person that used to, and he's passed away. I don't know if you still have people doing that?
We do. We have a scholarship through the community foundation so people can apply for funds, and we support people that can't afford the fees.
And that's one of the things we've been trying to focus on over the last year, getting that information out to people so that they know that that resource is available for them. And we actually just had our strategic planning yesterday, and we talked about even doing more of that next year. So Guard Just Tried events, where we have them, they can come out and do the different sports. Like, we really want to focus there, like, hey, if you're interested in the sport but you can't afford it, we have resources for you.
And then I'll turn it to Katie or whoever else to talk about everything else.
So one other note on the fees that Pam talked about, one of the new things, so basically every, and I've got notes on here, so when you see it, you'll have, it's all minimum wage, umpire cost increase for sports that need that, and that's tied right into that minimum wage. We have some increased rent that we're being charged for programs. And then the new option that we have this year has to do with Cedar Hill and Nanacoke, the boat slips there. So we're adding in or requesting permission to add in a seasonal partial year option. So in the past, we've always just had an annual option. You had to pay for the entire year for a boat slip whether you were using it or not. And so you'll see there that we have a range now where we used to just have one number for those boat slips, and that's representing whether you're doing a seasonal rental or for the entire year. Other than that, so in all three of our budgets this year, I'll start with tourism. That one, just as a reminder, that's funded primarily by room tax collections as opposed to a county appropriation from the taxpayers. In addition, tourism has some special events that they run that they generate revenue with as well. So room tax is our big driver there. We're doing our best to estimate that. It's still somewhat volatile based on recovering from COVID and then also just the general economic environment with people traveling either for leisure or business. So we did our best to make an educated estimate of what we think it will be. It is something that we get reports for every week, and we monitor every month, and then we adjust our spending, yeah, adjust our spending if we need to.
I have a question.
Yes.
Like, I'll use a dog show as an example, and, you know, that brings money in, room taxes and stuff. But I know that a lot of people use motorhomes in the parking lot. Is there a charge for parking them there?
There is, yes. We have a charge for them to park there. In the past, we had been offering spots with electric and spots without electric. The electric became something that was more and more difficult for us to do. So now there's just one parking price for those that want to stay in the parking lot. So we do get that, and that's revenue that comes in with the dog show as well.
On the parking side of things, it was difficult to obtain generators and get them locked in to a contract because people would say, hey, we have a better opportunity. And so we would think we have a contract, and then we'd lose out on some generators that we thought we needed, had to do that.
Most of your motorhomes have generators anyway. They're self-contained.
Yeah, and that's how we were finding that. And the other issue with the generators was it's November, so that's hurricane season. So if there was any kind of storm anywhere on this side of the country, all of the generators around here were being allocated for that. So, but with room tax, we just monitor it. Like I said, we have weekly reports, monthly reports, we do our dashboards, and then we just manage our spending based on what we can do, based on that room tax. So that's tourism, and then I'll just keep going with the other two, and then we can take whatever questions. So Wreckin' Parks and Civic Center, both of the things driving the increase in appropriation on those are, it's pretty simple, it's the salary and the minimum wage expenses going up. And then we get inmates from the state of Maryland, and they have been instrumental in us getting our work done. Our staffing levels are pretty low when it comes to maintenance, parks, things like that. So one of the things that the state started implementing last year, we redid the MOU with them, is a $72 a day transportation fee. So every day that we get inmates, we have to pay the state $72. That has, it's gonna affect Civic Center, probably about $18,000 extra dollars for that. And the Wreckin' Parks, we're estimating about $12,000 for that. It's still a cheaper labor pool, and it's still a necessary labor pool. It's just we had to add some money in for that, for those, to cover those expenses, so.
I mean, the state is looking for ways, I think, to cover their costs associated with their increased correctional officers and that kind of stuff. So we are picking up some of that cost.
I guess Shore Transit can't run a transit over there.
It has to be them. They had some issues in the past with the transportation, so it has to be done by the jail.
Do we get any inmates from the detention center in Salisbury?
So not at this time, but I think.
We don't currently, but that's something we're gonna explore and hope if that is an opportunity, we would pursue that.
Just to kind of piggyback on that, they have pre-trial.
Julie, you have to use a microphone. Can you go to the?
I'm sorry. So I talked to Chris Tyler about that, and they, the problem is, is that the inmates, due to COVID and regulations that have changed, most of their inmates are pre-trials, so they can't go out and do that.
Same issue we're having with trash along the road.
Correct, correct. Hopefully, though, we'll be able to, to in the future, you know, in working.
And just to kind of tie up on that end, we used, a lot of times, we used the county inmates for night and weekend flips. So we have something on Friday, we have something on Saturday. We'd get them with a guard to come over, and so we've had to use more between that and the staffing shortage. We have to use more temporary labor, and that's significantly more expensive than using part-time employees. So that's affected the expense there, but it's what we've had to do to continue to be successful in turning events and running the things in the building. So that was like the quick notes that I had there, but we can answer any specific questions that anybody has about any other budgets.
The, I had a question of Pirate's Wharf. That's gonna come online. I didn't know, is that going to affect the budget in the future because we're gonna have to maintain it? Obviously, I think it would, but I don't know. Is that something that you guys can absorb with what you already have?
Yeah, well, what we've put in the budget would support that. So, but there will be, you're right, there's a, there's a cost, and we don't know what the usage will be. So I think we'll learn more in this next year as to what is the level of trash, the level of usage. But we think we can manage that.
We can manage it at least enough in this budget cycle to see where we're gonna be.
Yeah.
Since we'll, it'll be probably about half of the year, three quarters of the year as opposed to the whole thing. So that'll give us a good baseline of what we're gonna need, and it could affect, you know, next year's requests.
Are you guys getting more staff? Like, are you filling your staffing roles? Because I knew you were short on the beginning of the year, you know, that's changing.
Our hardest part is our lower-level jobs. We're having a really hard time filling those. We've had decent luck with some of our higher-level jobs, but Civic Center, we have three full-time maintenance staffs. That's 15 shifts a week, and we have events seven days a week. So it's really hard to manage it. We have been able to get some part-time people in there, but it's the, it's the lower jobs that we have the most problem with. Parks, we're getting pretty close to fill it back up. Tourism, tourism has been fine. The real struggle has been probably, if I had to pick one, I'd say maintenance at the Civic Center.
And one of the things we're hoping is, is because we're bumping that bottom number because of the bottom two pay grades, we're hoping that also helps alleviate some of the problems of recruiting people at the Civic Center.
What percentage are you bumping the bottom number?
The, the bottom one is 13.9?
It's 13, and then that ties, that percentage ties pretty much directly to the minimum wage increase. So if you look at the $15, it's 13% over where the current minimum wage is.
And then the next one up is in the sevens. So the bottom two scales, and then everybody else is getting 3%. Because we had, the, the starting number for the bottom two pay scales was below what minimum wage was.
Yes, true.
So to be able to, we had to bump those bottom two. The other thing I wanted to point out is that on the capital side of the budget, we have, there's about $1.2 million worth of Pago funding requested for projects for Wreckin' Parks. Most of that funding is associated with matches for state grants. In addition, one of the biggest ones is $380,000 for Purdue Stadium boilers. We were just awarded $100,000 by the state of Maryland in their bond bill to help pay for those. So without that hundred, without the 380, the 100 won't go as far. So that's one of the ones that if we, if we make a decision, if you make a decision that some capital projects need to be cut, we have to be cognizant of losing out on grant money if we cut those. So we were awarded in the state budget $100,000 to help replace boilers at Purdue Stadium, but we need the other 380 to complete that project.
Is the, you had a question, Shane?
Yeah, you know, my question is, I see Indian Village, the electricity was $1,089, but the upgrade to that program, to the playground, and I was, I went by there the other day, and I saw the landscaping should be a little, a simple thing to do, to spruce it up. And I know, I think, when I was meeting with you, you were saying something about the basketball court is gonna be new out there. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes. So the next thing, if you look at it good, the playground equipment, I don't think it's no bigger than this table. It's, it's small for like toddlers, and, and I was, I asked one of my McDonald buddies, what would they like to see out there, not saying you could do it tonight or next year. Make a pavilion where it can be used, like other parks where you can rent the pavilion for like family reunions, things like that. That's where you can make money to help finance that playground and bring programs in. And I heard her say about state grants, maybe get a state grant, community block grant or something for that particular playground. I do know Sheriff Lewis is gonna do the Communes Day hopefully out there with some organizations. But I think we need to target that playground right now, and then I think Shane, what's the one down?
I was gonna ask him when you were done.
Okay.
Is there anything in the budget for Palvo?
Right, that's what I was gonna say.
What playground?
Yeah, yeah, so we are planning, so there's two parts to that. So we're referring to the Atkins Mill Park?
Yes.
Yes, so the, the spacing is a little bit of an issue. So what we think we can do is the old house there that's not being used is to demo that house. And so that's in the budget to be able to demo that house. That would free up the space. It's right next to the pavilion restroom, so we think that could be a good location. And we've included the playground in our program open space. That'll be a recommendation we're making through the executive's office. So bottom line is, I think we can do it. It would probably take a year because there's asbestos removal, and then the house would have to be removed. But it is included in the budget, to answer your question.
The, the project in Hebron, what's that one called? The, what is it, the, the?
West Metro.
Yeah, the West Metro. Is that in the budget at all, or is that something that's gonna be later?
No, it's not currently budgeted because we're.
Well, there's, we do have the 225 that's budgeted.
Right, right.
Is there other, is that?
It's in this, we're using the, so we've been leasing that land, and so that money has to go to that. So that's the accumulated lease money that we have. So that is, that part is in there.
Yeah, but it's.
The actual building of a park.
Yeah, well, that, and what I meant by my answer is we're not requesting additional funds. So we've collected the farm lease money. That's how we're paying for the current planning effort. But we're not asking for funds because at this point, we haven't decided what it is that we're gonna build. So until that happens, I think we're a cycle away from figuring that part out.
So the 225 would be to more finalized plans and then possibly, possibly start something, but it would be more on the plan side. And then the question becomes is, in future fiscal years, what, what are those plans, and what is the cost of that?
And you go to 124,000 for Cove Road?
Yes.
Yeah, that's a good one there.
Yeah.
And I think, I think the public should realize too that if they really were to look into this, it's a very interesting city. You've got over $10 million worth of state grants, which is pretty phenomenal for, for as many projects. You've got about 10, 15 projects here. And it's really nice to see those type of investments. It just doesn't rain money. You do have to go after it and, and talk to the state in order to get it and put it right here. So a lot of credit for you on that.
Well, thank you. And I'll, I'd give credit to Katie and the staff, all of our staff, our tourism staff, Rec, Rec, Civic Center, they actively pursue these grants, and they are time-consuming. And if, I think we know if we didn't do that, these things wouldn't happen. So the initiative of the staff is there. I appreciate the comment.
Sure.
But I would like to share that with the staff because they, they do an awful lot of work to, to make this happen.
I have another question. It's on page 10. The, it says, I guess it's youth civic center rent $98,000. What is that?
So that's the money that is, so all of the recreation department is housed within the Civic Center, so the offices. So that money has been there historically to represent payment to the Civic Center from recreation for that space and the associated utilities and things like that.
So it's there, the shield.
And it, it is charged.
Yes.
But it, it is, the, the fact that the Civic Center is its own separate fund, Wreckin' Parks is paying rent to the Civic Center.
Yeah, okay, that was a big number, so.
Yeah, and that number hasn't changed since I've, I have taken this job 10 years ago, or took the job 10 years ago. So that $98,000 is being looked at for future fiscal years to see if it is the appropriate number to be charged between the funds.
And that's the office space, and then it's, you know, the, one of the things we're looking at is recreation's running more programs out of the Civic Center now. That's one of the reasons we're looking at the $98,000. Our karate program is running completely out of the Civic Center by the recreation staff. So that's one of the things we're looking for, just to make sure that that number is accurate.
What's PHP stand for?
Pemberton Historical Park?
Huh?
Pemberton Historical Park.
Okay, I gotcha. Okay, that's what I thought.
The $44,550 travel, meals and lodging, that looks like a new appropriation.
Page 10? I was just getting ready to ask about it.
Which, which fund is it in? I'm sorry, is it 60, 61, 62?
Page 10.
Page 10.
I don't. Center Wreckin' Parks.
Yeah, Wreckin' Parks, travel, meals and lodging, 44,000.
So that's, so we are moving Governor's Challenge. So the budget for that event has historically been in tourism. Our recreation staff is the staff that runs that event. So we are moving that into the Recreation and Parks budget. So that number is new to the Recreation and Parks budget, but it's not new overall. It's always been there for, that's the travel, meals and lodging for Governor's Challenge, the actual event. So we have, we put teams up in hotels, referees, all of that stuff. That's what's included.
So there would be, there's a corresponding decrease on the tourism side for the fact that tourism no longer has those revenue and expenses. This department now has those revenue expenses. So anything that ends in a project number 78850 within Wreckin' Parks is Governor's Challenge and should be brand-new to the Wreckin' Park side of things.
Do we get revenue to cover that somewhere?
Yes, we do.
Yes.
I'll give you just a picture of Governor's Challenge as a whole. So that has traditionally been a break-even event for us, but over the last, with the return of it last year, we did really well as far as actually bringing in net revenue for it. So this year, it's budgeted at a total of, I think it's got $3,000 of, of net profit there on it. So it is a profit generator, and it is only growing. I think this year, we'll have actually an expansion of the dates on it. But it looks like a new appropriation because it is, but it's coming from tourism. So there'd be a corresponding, and there's corresponding revenue to offset it as well.
When you say, when you say you put some teams up, can you explain that?
Yeah, so the high-profile teams, like for instance, one of the teams that, I'll make an example. So let's say we got the team that LeBron James's son pays, plays for. Some of those teams will not come to events without being.
Sponsored.
Like, have lodging provided. So we have agreements with some of the higher-level teams, and that helps drive our revenue because more people want to come see those big, your DeMathas, your, they want their draws for the attendance. And we set an attendance record last year for the event, so just trying to continue to grow that.
And I'll, and I'll add one comment on the Governor's Challenge, just because we're talking about it. That room generates, I think it was about 700 hotel room nights at a time of the year, where December's a tough time for hotels. So in addition to the revenue that it generates for the county, it is a revenue driver to bring teams to stay over at a, at a time of year that really helps the hotels and the restaurants.
And that wouldn't be reflected in my revenue number that I just gave. That's just strictly the revenue and expenses for the event itself. It doesn't include the room tax. That would be on the tourism side.
Jane?
Yeah, one thing, so one thing I've heard a lot of at the last town hall was soccer fields. Is there, are you guys looking into maybe doing something with soccer fields anywhere? I mean, I, I'm just asking, you know?
Yeah, no, I think, yes, to answer your question. And, and part of the, the whole purpose of that public meeting was to get input, and that was some of the input that we heard. So we're, we're going back now to the folks that are doing the plan, and we're giving them that feedback. And so that's in process. So, yeah, and, and even in our, our land preservation plan, which I think was adopted prior to the election, but we have a five-year land preservation plan. And, and in that plan, we identify needs, what are gaps and services in the county. And lighted soccer fields is definitely one of the top ones, so we, we recognize that. I think there is an opportunity at the Hebron Park or to do something somewhere else, but we definitely recognize it.
After that meeting, I, I had a few people that were in the meeting that didn't speak up, and they called me up and said, hey, look, you know, we, I think they're right, we want soccer fields. You know, baseball is, is, not everyone gets a chance to play baseball. If you've ever played baseball, some people just sit on the bench the whole time, so. And there's a lot of parents that don't want their kids at all in baseball. But, and that's just something I picked up, anyway.
I only have one, one ton of things. I know we're wrapping up. Civic Center is managing to stay pretty even, and I'm just curious, from your perspective, how you see it trending over the next couple of years? Because you know, I mean, outside of the, of the COVID shots in the Civic Center, which was a good revenue stream, everything else totally crashed and burned, of course. So I'm wondering how you see the Civic Center is trending over the next couple of years where it's headed.
Yeah, I'll, I'll take that one. I think everything is favorable. You're starting to see the mega concerts back out on the road. Taylor Swift, we, we were talking about her tour on the way over here. There's a lot of major artists that are now touring, to the point even the agencies are short-staffed now. They were, they lost staff during COVID, and they're having a hard time even keeping up with the contracts. So the forecast looks really good for entertainment. I think you're starting to see that at the Civic Center. We're also seeing an uptick in business meetings and things where people weren't doing things outside of their office setting. Now they're starting to come back in. Fundraisers, different things like that, and even our dinner and ship process in the midway room is really starting to take off, and the attendance is good. So I would say we're on an upward trajectory with entertainment and events over there at the Civic Center. Really now, it's probably more date issues, making sure we can fit everything in in the busy periods, you know? So the demand is there.
Yeah, the demand, from my prior life being over there, the month of December is parties and graduations. January, February, March is booked pretty solid, starting basically at Martin Luther King and goes through end of March. There's either a sporting event, rodeo, the.
Honestly, it'll go all the way through May with the graduations, so the commencements and everything like that.
So that's their busy season, and it has gotten back to being that busy season again with, with kind of the return to normal.
I was hoping, I tell you, I think it's a really good investment, the sign you put out front. Really nice, good, because I'll drive by there occasionally, and, and I, and you do see that, you do notice that there's some really large shows that seem to be always on the screen coming up, and gets my attention, anyway.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I noticed, I was at YHI watching my nephew, and when everybody's sitting in County Stadium, you can see that sign the entire time you're there. So when they have events, we have a built-in audience.
Yeah.
As long as you're not advertising for correctional officers at ECI, right?
Yeah.
They were paid, yeah.
That was a paid sponsorship.
They, they pay their fee.
Revenue's revenue.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
When are we getting Taylor Swift coming?
I don't think we have enough seats, unfortunately. Maybe for a private concert by her, but.
I think she's playing at Lincoln Financial this weekend, tonight, tomorrow, or whatever. So what, 60,000 to 80,000 people?
I'm, I'm.
Just a little small.
Probably couldn't even afford her to come here.
No, yeah.
Josh, I was gonna do a knockoff Steve Miller Band as an alternative.
There you go. I play music, so I'll join you there.
I think you already had.
No.
Thank you.
All right, great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thanks, Steve.
Oh, there was one thing. We just wanted to thank everybody for your support with all the stuff that we have going on. We wouldn't be able to do all of it without, without your, the council's support.
When are they gonna start the escalators?
We think.
Hopefully soon. Yeah, we're, we're having to work through the process. We just got the funds loaded, but hopefully soon, we're, we're eager to get that going.
Yeah, cool. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pray for no rain.
Shugger, how are you?
Good afternoon.
Good to see you.
Good to be here, thank you, member of the council.
We will let you have the floor and, and, you know, go, you know, the council really kind of looks at what we might saw, extreme increases in expenses or extreme increases in revenues, things like that. I think you know how it works, and we, we're very interested in how that's playing, and the, the new library as well, so.
Okay, great.
Thanks.
Thank you again for inviting me to talk about our budget for next year. I'd like to say thank you to the county executive for the appropriation of a 10% increase to our total funding from this year's current fiscal year, which is a larger increase than we've had for several years, but also restores us for the first time since 2009 to our funding levels where we were at that time. That's after our 25%, 25 and a half percent cut in 2009, and then an additional 2% in 2010. So 15 years later, we're back at the same base level funding per dollar that we were at that time. What we're, what we proposed to do with the funding, with the additional funding, is a salary study that we completed this year and that I've shared with our liaison from the council to the board, Mr. Baker. We're also implementing the 15% minimum wage. We had 15 members of our staff that are currently paid below that, and a number of other at the lower grades that would be impacted if we were to raise all of those folks up to $15 an hour. So we're following the county's lead in terms of the model of implementing that with a 18% increase for the lower grades, which is where we needed to be in order to get the, those at the very bottom, up to $15 an hour. And then a 9% increase for grades six through eight, excuse me, for grades four through seven, and then for grades eight and up, a 3% increase. So everybody would get a 3% increase in this budget. But this obviously incentivized us to focus on those lower grades and get them up to a competitive level. And I'm actually very happy we're doing it that way because it's gonna make those entry-level positions, the frontline staff, very competitive with our neighbors here on the eastern shore, which was our goal. We're also increasing funding for collection development, so basically the materials we purchase, books and other media. We're making some investments in our mobile services unit because we've added a vehicle. So we're adding some funds for programming and materials for that department as well. And we're also beefing up our marketing and outreach so that we can be more visible across all parts of the county.
Okay. Any questions from anybody? I know that the library was flat-lined for a couple of years there.
Yeah.
Shouldn't have been, but it was.
Over the last 15 years, we've been flat-funded for, I believe, six of the years.
Yeah.
And most of the other years, it's been single, low, single-digit increases that are barely keeping pace with cost of living and inflation.
I get it, I get it.
Yes, sir.
An update on the east side project?
We've selected an architect, and we're negotiating a contract with that individual right now to get started with a goal of having the live, the building there in Parsonsburg ready to relocate the Pittsfield branch. ready to relocate the Pittsfield branch by the summer of, of '24.
And pretty much all your capital expenses are going into '25, right?
Yes, there's, there isn't really, they have some in their, in their own budget with what we give them. They have some operating capital, but they aren't requesting any specific capital for, because we kind of moved it all up into '23 to accomplish the purchase of the building.
Right. Anybody else? Josh?
Just out of the 160, the increase, is that, what percentage of that is salary?
Most of it. I mean, we are doing significant, I, I'm sorry, I don't have the exact figures in terms of the percentages, but most of it is going towards the staff for salary and for the benefits when we, when we bump those people up. Because it's a significant increase for, especially for the folks in grades one through three that are getting an 18% increase. But that's not to, to understate that we are making significant increases in terms of thousands of dollars into what we're purchasing for, for books and materials and for the other initiatives that I mentioned.
Who else?
So Pam, this is a state mandated department. How much is the state mandate this year?
Okay. For F, for, so for FY '23, the state, for, that's for our current fiscal year, the state is providing 43% of the total state-county funding just for operations. The state mandates a, basically a 40/60 where it's in state statute that the state would fund 40% of the minimum library program and that the state would chip in 60% for those counties that are participating for the minimum library program. That includes any capital investments as well, so not just operations. So if the county is making capital investments, that counts towards their 60% required minimum contribution if they're participating in the program. Wycomico is in compliance and we verify that every year with the state library. We're well in compliance, in fact. We're providing well over the, the minimum required to participate in this program. However, we are ranked 24 out of 24 lowest for the county appropriation across the state. So...
Per capita?
Per capita, that's correct. So per person, Wycomico County government is providing less per person than every other county in the state. By a significant, we're winning that dubious distinction by more than a dollar with our nearest, just above us ranking, Allegheny County. I was just looking at this. Dorchester County is ranked 22nd and they're providing almost a full $2 more. And Somerset is providing, they're ranked 17th, I think, and they're providing $9 more. And those are some of the lower rankings. So that's, you know, that's where we've been for a number of years, a library that's underfunded comparably and it shows in terms of just our facilities, what we compensate our staff with all these folks, you know, that are below minimum wage and with the quality of our programs. We only have three branches, so.
In, in studying that, does any of the municipalities from the other counties make any contributions to the libraries?
It's not the model of the way that it's set up in Maryland. The, the state statute identifies the county government as the partner. That's not to say that, and us too, we have been awarded some grants from the city, but they're not a key partner for us. In fact, they wouldn't even waive our parking fees for our staff.
Oh my gosh.
They don't waive parking fees for anyone, so.
Well, well, the capital investments that are coming up, will that be applied towards the, the metrics you were referring to?
It will. So we're gonna look pretty good for FY '23 with the capital. I, I think we might bump up in the rankings a bit perhaps, because those will count towards the total county contribution to the library. That said, Allegheny has finished up a, a number of, our main competitor for the dubious distinction of lowest ranked, has, has completed a number of large capital projects and the county is starting to invest more in their operations. Allegheny, even though they're ranked low, four of their buildings are, were built within the last six years. So the county's been putting some money into buildings.
That's something we need to pay attention to in the coming next couple of years.
This was one of the ways we could do that was to fund the request at 10% for the, at least get us back to where we were in 2009 and start that process of funding them at a higher level.
Yeah. 2009 was a tough year.
Yeah.
It's 2023.
I know. And, and so we, the administration felt it was important to put this funding, yeah, put this, put this funding forward.
Yep.
She's an English teacher or something.
Any other questions? So thank you very much.
Thank you, Seth.
I tell you all the time, you're doing a great job.
Thank you. Thank you.
He is doing a great job.
Yeah.
Planning and zoning is in the hall, is coming in.
There she is.
Lori.
Hello.
How are you?
Hey Keith.
How are y'all doing on Friday afternoon?
Because this weekend, we have myself.
Where would you rather be? That's all I have to say.
Right here with you.
North Carolina.
A boat sounds pretty good to me.
Fishing rod does sound pretty nice right about now, doesn't it?
Yeah, they're catching big reds right now, so.
So planning and zoning is Department 13, within the general fund. And I think I heard Laura say page 20.
Yes.
In your books of the general fund expenses. Primarily, their changes are to add some programs and I'm gonna let Keith and Lori explain those programs. I will say there is one staffing level decision that we're look, we're looking at funding the GIS employee at a higher level than what was put in the budget for this year. We're having incredible difficulty finding somebody for that position. Additionally, we do have to start looking at succession planning within our, within our county. Frank has been a wonderful employee to the county, but we do need as a county to start transitioning some knowledge from him to some, someone else so that we continue to have that level of expertise within our department. And the salary that we had in there and the grade level that it was previously at in last year's salary study was not sufficient to attract anyone to the county. So one of the salary requests is to up that number significantly for fiscal '24 to allow them some flexibility to find somebody. And then the new programs, I'm gonna turn it over to Lori and Keith because they will answer it a whole lot better than I will.
Well, the one program that I'll start with and then Keith will pick up on the other one. I think on your line items, we have, we've asked for an additional $75,000 to go towards community development. And that's to be able to be more competitive at the state level when we do apply. We have seen over the last few years, communities that have scored well are those that have matches from the county. And that's been something that we have only been doing in kind for many, many, many years. So as we have learned and I had just recently had a meeting today and we're seeing that to be more of a challenge for the actual communities that don't have actual funding involved with some of these particular projects.
Let's explain that a little bit more. $75,000 for what?
So basically, if, you can remember, under our community development, we have the block grant that the county's been basically administering since probably 1998. And with that, normally we would be putting in a county match and that will be time, staff time. So we don't always score very well. We get through, but we don't get the max amount, which is can be up to $800,000.
So what does that do?
So it basically, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Holloway. So it's the housing rehab.
Okay. Replacement roofs, replacement wells, septic, drain fields. Right now, we have approximately 300 people on a waiting list looking for some type of financial assistance.
326, to be exact.
So by taking this, typically in every two-year period, we get $350,000 from the state. We're looking to increase our mats to show that we've got skin in the game as well, in hopes that we're gonna get more than the 300, $350,000 every two years.
Correct.
That will allow more outreach and more improvements to take place in our community.
So like for instance, I had a homeowner from the east side who came into the office on yesterday. They're getting hit with that $20,000 to replace the, the septic. And she said, her and her husband, that's more than what they could possibly do. So this will help, you know, to subsidize that at the state level.
So, so anyone can apply, let's just say you get the 800,000. So I'm just gonna use an example. So I know somebody that has a problem with the septic system. They just come to you and say, hey, look, I'm having problems affording this. Do they have to show you financial records?
Yes, they do.
Okay, so they have to go through a whole process?
As well as income requirements.
Yes.
And proof of income.
Right. That way they, that the county can actually help them so they're not having their toilet back up on them.
Correct.
And then any awards, after that award is made, there's a lien placed on them for a five-year period.
Actually, it's now up to 10.
So that way a homeowner is not getting an improvement at the expense of the government, whether local, state, or federal, then flipping their home and actually making money off that said improvement.
Is there an interest on it at the end of it? Or does it?
So basically, depending upon how they actually qualify. Some are qualified for the 0% interest, then some can qualify for one actual percent.
And it's a prorated payback if you leave before the 10-year period.
Oh, wow. That's, that's...
Absolutely. I mean, we have a community that is in need. Housing stock is aging. People are looking to age in place. Improvements are needed. It's a very important program.
So who gets first dibs? Whoever signs up first? Is that how it works?
Correct. It is always on first come, first served.
And the list always exceeds our ability to do the projects. So as you could imagine, you could hypothetically have people on a list that goes back multitudes of years because of the limited funding that we're working with. Also, as we all know, building supplies, materials are going up.
Correct.
Costs are going up, inflation. It's definitely the perfect storm.
Now, is this all housing projects? Or is there like limited amounts of, I guess I'm getting off topic, but is it, is it just all things that have to do with the house?
Housing, yes. All things related to the house.
And the only things outside are gonna, it better not be furniture.
It's not furniture, it's not landscaping, it's not any of that at all. It's anything related to the property as it relates to the house.
The basic necessities of keeping a safe structure.
We, we've never had this in here before.
This is correct.
That is correct.
This is something new.
So what we're trying to do is leverage this money to try to rank higher in the scoring with the state to get more money from the state. So as, as Keith said, we get about $300,000. We're hoping to get closer to the $800,000 by showing that we're putting $75,000 into this program.
Isn't this same program done through like Shore Up or somebody like?
No. So what happens is Shore Up is under what is called the rural development targeted area. So anything that's outside of the bypass, that's what they're able to do. So if it's, if it's someone who was inside of the bypass, they're not able to assist.
Do we do inside Salisbury also?
No, we do not. We just do Wycomico County.
Unincorporated portion.
I, I do want to say this. Shore Up doesn't do everything that they used to do.
This is true.
Because when I, my granddaughter was living with me and her two children, if I lived by myself, I wouldn't have qualified. And they put a new heating system and the weatherization part, but it still don't give you like, they used to do storm windows, storm doors and things like that.
Correct.
But they don't do that anymore. I know years ago, my mother, the house I live in now, like you said, the lien, she had to live five years.
At that time.
And she got a new bathroom, a, a heating system, that kind of stuff. But that was years ago. So I had a contractor ask me, are you doing, are we doing this? Because he doesn't hear that we're doing it because he works at a Somerset County.
Mm-hmm.
And Somerset County is spending a lot of money in rehabbing homes, but they don't see us doing it. And see, I'm glad to hear that you're all back doing that and, and applying for those grants because you did it years ago.
And we still have been. It hasn't really changed. It's said that we've had a list and it pretty much averages about 15 houses a year.
Okay.
Tops between the two-year.
Okay.
Depending on the level of the project.
Okay.
But we're not going in and replacing and making it a Taj Mahal. They are comparable replacements. They have to meet energy efficiency and they have to meet code expectations.
All right.
So you guys find the contractor or the homeowner does?
We put the project out to bid.
It's a competitive bid process.
Competitive bid process.
Okay.
Would you be able to supply us with any materials that would give sort of a synopsis of these three new programs that you have?
Oh, of course.
Sure, most definitely.
That'd be great.
Yes.
Yeah. Josh?
Yeah. So I guess I just wanted to get at the salaries for planning and zoning. Where, you know, for seven years, I ran Eastern Tour Planning Directors Roundtable piece, if you remember.
Absolutely.
Yeah. And I've been around, and of course, my day job, I've always been around the comprehensive planning for folks across the shore. There's a not-so-great reputation in the sense that our, we don't pay well here in Wycomico. And I know that we've had, you know, Cassie just left, or others. What are we, if there's one area of the budget where I really feel like we don't pay enough, that's to the planning, to the planners. And I know how important that work, how crucial that work is, just for my own day job kind of stuff. But, but I also don't like the, the reputation that it's out there that we don't do enough here to protect our own. And seeing the staff leave, that only continues to show that to me. So what can we do there? Is there something that could be done there?
Well, Mr. Hastings, since you brought that up, unfortunately today, after I got back from lunch, I got another resignation. And so it is definitely an issue. And again, being able to compete, even with our near, nearby counties have been even a challenge. So as we travel to conferences and around that net, we know there's more that can be and should be done, but we understand that it has been a challenge. But we definitely need the support. And I believe that we have gotten the support to the degree with the study so far, but it still did not take us to where we needed to be.
And we've also been the benefactor of that as well. Planners are in high demand.
Yep.
There's not a lot of planners in this neck of the woods and there's quite a lot of counties that are even, you know, either growing or people retiring, whatever it may be. So it's not uncommon when you have a job open in a nearby jurisdiction, they start looking at a proven, it's, well, we're a proven commodity, to be blunt. And we're seeing that within 12 to 18 months, a planner will get enough experience that they can go off and make more money in a different environment. That is just part of the nature of this area as well. But I know it's not just one-dimensional. We were able to pick up a, a manager-level position from Worcester County. So competitive is, it's kind of cyclical. At one moment, you're gonna be the most competitive and then other people are gonna get more and more competitive and then you'll become less competitive and then it cycles back around.
Of course, underscore the, you know, the, the, the learning curve for a planning position is quite long compared to even other staff positions or other.
It's 12 to 18 months. So going back to the salary, looking at Exhibit E, and that's where you'll find that we've put in a request for an increase for GIS analyst or specialist position of $20,000. And you might be going, oh my gosh, that's a really big increase. We are losing people in that position to other jurisdictions for between 70 and 90,000. That's with them having a year to two years' experience.
And we produce locally some of the best GIS professionals in the state. And we produce locally some of the best GIS professionals in the state.
That, that's the part about, we are the proving ground.
Yes, we're the proving ground.
However, there's a cost to not being able to have that retention and also the attraction. So, you're trying to look at, how can you market yourself? How can you retain, you know, retain the quality staff that we're getting? The other thing would regard, regarding salaries is we've been very fortunate over the past few years that the administration, as well as the council, has been making sure we're getting the positions we need. We were historically understaffed. So, when you have a good staffing level, you can start working on cross-training and other tools. So, it's just a little more than just salaries itself.
And I'm, and, you know, I have talked to several other planning directors over the last year or two, 'cause I've been scratching my head a lot about it. And, you know, they're all seeing some of the similar things. Again, we dealt with the great resignation. So, there's a lot of factors there, but definitely, we having to be able to compete is one of the other ones as well.
And I'll just point out to the, you know, other, I've heard other jurisdictions, other folks have found, they said, hey, Josh, you know, we offer a 32-hour work week or 35-hour work week, you know, flexible work schedules or other kind of, apparently Wycomico, we've been kind of rigid in that, is what I've been told. And then, same thing with our, you know, the degree to which administrative support or others compared to, you know, a non, you know, a high school education requirement compared to a college degree. You know, the planning profession is usually, you know, most folks usually have a master's degree and that. So, as a whole, if there's one area, you know, that, I mean, just hearing you say now another resignation only further points out what I'm, what I'm kinda worried about is that we really need folks in Wycomico County who solidly understand planning, who are, you know, are embedded in this work and, and do do so for long-term. If there's any other ways that we can continue to address that, I'm sure the county.
So, there, there are definitely other ways we address it. Flexibility definitely helps, especially with all this money that's come out with the IIJA. Private sector vendors are hiring left and right and, and they're getting a lot of money, 'cause jurisdictions are getting a lot of money. And we don't have the resources, so we have to outsource it. Another thing is training opportunities, educational opportunities. So, you'll look at the budget and you might see that under certification, research, continuing ed, you know, we might have more than other departments may have. There's the opportunity to go to conferences, working with professional peer groups. So, we're, we're trying to be very creative. One of the things we're trying to learn as we go through this evolution, what type of culture are people looking for? 'Cause it seems like culture matters more than ever now. And the salary, while it is important, culture is kinda taken even more of a front seat than salary. So, it's something we're very cognizant of and there's a multitude of ways you can make an investment in someone, more so than just a salary. We're trying to do everything we can.
You took my closing point, Mr. President. I'll leave it at that, just by saying that the, you know, the, from what I hear in my day job and my kind of work, the culture, you know, the folks can do this work from home. They can be very flexible. And, you know, this is a job where, you know, you gotta be able to know your skills in GIS. You're, you know, you're, it's a, there's a talented, there's a, there's not enough folks to be able to do this work and there's a lot of demand out there. So, I appreciate all that you can do as far as the flexibility changes there and then anything I can do to support. I think this is one area that we may have to look at. We can't, we cannot afford to lose planning professionals and I think it's really important.
It's very challenging. And I will say this and that will be done after this with this. I think that it's gonna be critical to help because even though you're trying to develop the culture, not everybody has the same type of professional position. So, then therefore, it becomes very challenging when you're working with culture. Someone then be able to say, well, they get to do it and I don't. So, that becomes our challenge as managers. And even though you want to do some of those things, it can become very much of a challenge.
Culturally, we have two set of professionals. We've got building permits inspection professionals, which is in office, but a lot of work outside. And then, you have planners, which is a lot of work inside. So, it is balancing that, making sure it's equitable for both parties.
I'll just say from the nonprofit world, we've been stealing your folks for a long time.
You have.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
We take that as a compliment and we're gonna keep, we're gonna keep on training. We're gonna keep on producing the best we can and trying to make it so they wanna stay with Wycomico County.
Thank you.
Is your staff right now, somebody mentioned to me that your building inspector wasn't a licensed building inspector? Or is there somebody working in your office that's doing work that they're not, I won't say qualified, but education-wise, they're not qualified?
So, basically, when you look at the ad, when it was first advertised, they have up until a year to get those particular qualifications. But they have to have something in regards to the building and experience in order to get the job.
So, you don't always hire somebody with the experience right off the bat?
No. A good way to look at it, James, is you, you know the profession and the trade very well.
Right.
People that are in the trade are not getting these certifications. These certifications are only necessary for government work. Well, construction's been hot. It's hard to find people that have those, that, you know, length of time, experience-wise, and you're not gonna find them with credentials. The only way you're gonna find them with these certifications is if we're going out to another government and attracting to Wycomico County.
Yeah, that seems the trend with a lot of jobs.
This is the trend.
Yeah.
But to do that, we have to have the salary increases.
Yes, yes, we do. We lost our chief building inspector prior to the current administration.
Definitely.
To Weston, but anyway, for a few thousand dollars, it hurts.
Yeah.
We've invested 10, 15 years of time into that person. What is the value of retention of institutional knowledge?
Well, I spoke on this yesterday. I would love to see more than a 3% increase for Wycomico County employees as a whole.
It's only so much money.
Right. That's.
One of the things you could do to attract maybe someone that has experience in the construction industry is I, you know, there's a lot of carpenters that are getting older. And, you know, a lot of them wanna get out of the, that line of work. I mean, we got a phone book. There's a lot, I look at the, the businesses that have been in business for 25 years, you know, that's as long as businesses really last. And after 20-some years, then they, they wanna start thinking about something.
Now, that's a very good suggestion.
Yeah.
I think, and we did that.
I know a few off the top of my head right now.
No, it's the, the difficulty is when, just using your example, but it, we, we've gotta think outside the box, plain and simple. I mean, we've gotta be dynamic. When you have someone with 20 years of experience and you've got a job starting off at 43 to $53,000.
Right.
It might sound good to someone with not a lot of experience, but when construction is booming.
It doesn't.
It's hard to be competitive with the market.
Well, when you get somebody that's 50-some years old and, and they've been in the field for a long time, they've got, you know, they, they've got their house paid for. Now, they're looking for a retirement job. They're looking for health insurance to be paid for and they're not looking to break their back anymore.
Yeah.
Those are the types.
Well, we're gonna make sure you have copies of our card. Anything you can do to help, we'll great appreciate.
The, the other, the other side of that, though, and I understand what James is saying, there's liability issues with that. I mean, you just can't put anybody out there, no matter they're a carpenter for 40 years, you know, if they approve something and say, say, you know, there's a, there's an incident, you know, then the county's liable.
The county, the county is liable if we issue a permit in error and heavens forbid, something happens that we're not indemnified from. But the department does have a building inspector with all their credentials. So, there is oversight. We're not flying through without having anybody onboard with certifications. We still have an open position. We're actively looking for that. It's just part of the cycle. When Lori and I came onto these positions four years ago, the department probably had 250 years of institutional knowledge.
Right.
Well, now, we're probably down to about 140, 145. We'll get back to that place. It's just not happening overnight.
Just leave me your card.
I have a, I have a question.
Sure.
When we had orientation, one, two, three, four, and you asked what we like to see?
Yes, I did.
You said Santa Claus.
We said, we said, we would like to have a code enforcement officer. Another one.
That's correct.
And we have one code enforcement officer where the city of Salisbury has six, some little town, I don't know if it's Delmar or Sharktown, has two. And our code enforcement officer has 325 square miles to inspect. Now, I don't know if that's fair, but I think it's unfair. And what, what these code enforcement officers do is improve the quality of life of neighborhoods. And I think that we should consider, I don't see it in the budget anywhere, so maybe I missed it.
Shani, one of the things we're looking at this year, and I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. If you were still speaking, please.
Oh, no, go ahead.
Okay. One of the things we're gonna look at over this upcoming fiscal year is collecting more data, collecting more metrics. How many calls are there? How many citations are issued? What's the average time from the call, when it's the intake, to the response? In addition, enforcement alone is a very expensive endeavor, whether law enforcement, any type of enforcement. One of the low-hanging fruit that we can look at is education. How can we educate our communities about what is nuisance? What is acceptable? What is not acceptable? So, those are some of the things that we'll look at creatively outside the box over this next fiscal year. We do have money for printing and even, I'll, I'll, I'll give the tax bill as an example. The right to farm is included in the county tax bill that goes out every year. That's educating rural people about a farmer's rights. There's nothing to say that we can't have an FAQ about nuisance, what is allowed in the yard or conversely, what is not allowed in the yard and trying to help people to understand it, as well as trying to work with HOAs, to have a central point of contact with HOA so that we're not having to get calls from 100 residents. Those residents can work with the HOA board, the board then directly contacting Lori's staff member. So, we are gonna try to be creative and look at things very optimistically, but also taking that outside-the-box approach.
But the, I'm not gonna hold, 'cause we got all the gentleman that we're here to talk to, but the Somerset County, I understand, has a repeat offender.
That is true.
And my, so, one of the ways is if, if our code enforcement officer keeps going back to the same person, it should be a way to find that, that person each time and go up and up to help them. We can educate people and a lot of people are not part of a HOA either.
Absolutely.
That is true.
Not, and then you got the renters, you got all that kinda stuff that, I know one gentleman right now across from our street has 16 untagged cars, 24 bicycles, a porta potty in his yard. I went up to his house before he even started accumulating all these car, cars and told him, I said, you can't have that. So, I was trying to educate him and he just paid, I guess, paid no mind. He's got 16 cars in his yard.
And Shani, not only that, but you know, where our building inspectors are out on the road as well, is part of their job. Looking at creativity, you know, and looking at things differently that if they see something, or if they're going down to, I'm just gonna use Waterview, for example. Well, that's a 40-minute trip from here.
That's right.
So, instead of sending our nuisance code enforcement officer down there, if we've got a building inspector going down there that's capable of doing the same type of job and communicating the same message, we have to look at those opportunities as well. It's a large area to cover.
Another is question, is, and then I got, I'm, 'cause we're gonna see these people. I wanna go. The, like the utility companies. If they see anything out of whack, you might want to see if you could partner with them. All you need is the address and what the concern is. Maybe the gas company or the, I don't know if the electric company